All right. We call the July 17, 2019 Franklin Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order at 7:04. Attendance are supervisors Dee, Mars, Torres. Also in attendance are Solicitor Mark Thompson, Harbin Stark, Commission Chairman Paul Agassi, Township Manager John Corrigan, Assistant Township Manager Jeff Hayesburn, Secretary Chairman Norris. There are four members of the public in attendance, one distinguished visitor from Oklahoma. All stand for the... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is David coming?
Yes.
David Schneider just arrived. Is this raining now?
It is raining. It is flowing with a heart out there and it's raining.
Okay, a public comment, this is a public comment, is for anything related to tonight's agenda. The last public comment is for items not on tonight's agenda. It's important to state your name clearly for the tape so that the comments can be reflected accurately. Please state what your township is, township tax is. Public comment.
Yes, Mr. Steph?
There you go, sir.
I make a motion to approve the June 19, 2019 version two meeting minutes as presented by the township secretary. I second that. Donna, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five.
I make a motion that the board of supervisors adopt resolution 2019-13 regarding disposition of records for the board of supervisors meeting June 19, 2019, and the planning commission meeting February 2nd, 2019. Just have to get that back to us. Any comments? Any discussion?
This should be a simple play, we're just, we have the final minutes. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five.
I make a motion to board approve the June treasurer's report which includes the following disbursements. General fund with disbursements of $97,216.50. Park and Recreation Fund with disbursements of $9,739.33. Open Space Fund with disbursements of $6,553.17. Capital Reserve Fund with disbursements of $2,020.00. Emergency Services Fund with disbursements of $59,073.89. Fire Hydrant Fund with disbursements of $580.80. Leaving a balance in all funds totaling $329,281.51. Seconded by David. Okay, any comments or upgrades or questions on the treasurer's report?
All in favor, Stefan.
All right. We almost never plan anything, we always do it every time.
Stefan sometimes has a question.
You have other questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five.
The June zoning officers' report, there is no motion required, but permits issued were eight, building inspections twenty-seven, that's a jump up. Building fees collected $1,786. Recreation, Open Space and Impact $667.41. And miscellaneous $1,625. Was there anything outstanding in that miscellaneous fees, or any big chunk that jumped?
No, they're just... Yeah, well, $8.75 for two, why was that?
That was his new home.
Yeah, but why is miscellaneous fees $8.75? I don't know with that. I will per...
For 48 quick pro.
Well, I can permit, look at that, that's not normally...
Yeah, same time for miscellaneous.
The $16.25 was the permits process, right?
You're saying on 48 quick pro, why do we spend...
Yeah, why, miscellaneous means $8.75, I will look at that and then I'll give it back to you.
Okay, and there were two ongoing zoning issues reported. Any updates on that?
No, 327 Act of Row is still waiting for judge. And $16.21 is to stop all activity by the end of July, so we're just waiting to see if that happens.
This is it, we're not making, it's going to be July, that's it, right?
Yes, because he hasn't brought anything in the compliance, so...
He wants to solve the problem.
Yes.
Do we notice this first out yet?
I haven't seen a sign up there yet.
All right, so soon.
Just for the public information, building fees and building inspections, we collect essentially revenue neutral. We just, we don't make money on it, we try not to lose money, occasionally we do. The idea is that you're revenue neutral inspections. Okay.
So that's it for the zoning officer's report, Mr. Chairman.
I heard it.
The member of the PC who reported on July 11th, PC.
So I, I know there are chairs in here, but I can just get a quick... What we did was we talked about the Cox Two Lots subdivision, that was the main focus of the meeting, and we're going to bring that to tonight's discussion. And it was a relatively quick meeting. Listen, Joan, as you were saying, the person who presented this plaintiff gone back and forth with Jeff a couple of times, so it was like those comments were incorporated. So there are a few outstanding items, but they're all well-known, you're working your way through it, and the PC, they're not actually as an alternate. So Zach, we were real honest that time, we voted to approve that the board, we voted to recommend to them to approve the subdivision. So I guess if you have any comments when we do have that as an agenda, you can answer those.
Just the point, just reinforcing the point you had, that because of the time before the meeting, they had a chance to go back and forth and repeat a couple of times, so it was a pretty clean meeting because they resolved all initial issues.
There was just something that he had signed.
The planning model.
Planning model.
But Zach wasn't...
Okay, just the one issue that was left outstanding, I think, was the question of what to do about that shed. We were going to...
No, it comes off the plane, it wasn't that outstanding.
We'll talk, when the board talks about it, we'll...
Let's all see the picture.
We'll see the picture, we'll review it again.
Will I have your windows closed?
Too late.
It's dark out there now. Really dark out there. Stefan, you want to introduce?
Sure. Well, Chairman Paul Agassi of the HART will report on the July 2nd. HART and Stark Commission.
Thank you. On July 2nd, we thought the board of commissioners had a meeting, maybe a practice of doing what was possible now because of membership overlap. And there was a brief review of a number of issues that we've been talking about, and there could be on the agenda because they're outstanding. There was a brief nod to the 896 Roadbird, the Moreland Village, which the situation hasn't changed, Churchill African Cemetery, which I'm hoping, looking for research on the fall, it's obvious it's not going to happen this summer. The Historic Resources map, which rather than set a date later in time, we set a date for myself and just ran it to work on later this month, so we hope to get that wrapped up next week. And I made a brief leave for a member who knows, someone who has historically related materials such as maps, advertising, or other things that can easily see photographs, that can easily scan, but added to the website that we're developing to the church and ship, I would encourage anyone here who has that material, or knows somebody that's social with it, to have a good touch with us, for the office or if you work somewhere. And then we reviewed the planning for the 2019, 2020 series of talks that were focused on the area of historical society. We gave around some ideas and later definitely catch that up with lenders and the point is, at the moment, we wind up, our first talk, we're going to talk about historic farm. And then the last item is that I was encouraging a couple of our members to think about, who are HART members and possibly coming to our membership members, simply because they're now sitting through these meetings anyway, and we have a couple of spots on the Historic Commission we have up to now. And it's designed simply to facilitate, have your core, and so that we can conduct business if we should get a reprimand of the HART there and be shy, remember, of the Historic Commission if you haven't known the Historic Commission. And that was...
Nancy, you can read the next motion, but there's a couple of things I thought about to review, because the motion has a decision.
Oh, okay.
The one decision we didn't make on this Cox subdivision is related to sidewalks and street lighting. For some reason, that particular decision is always left to the board, so we need to make that decision. Property like this, in particular, do not have a class. I didn't want you to read the motion.
Yeah.
We hadn't discussed it. I think the only other issue, Diane and Zach were also there, on this subdivision, simple subdivision, guy has got about, how many, totally put you on it? Five, something, he's cutting off, he's cutting off 1.3 acres to sell as a building lot. So the only issue that came up afterwards was this shed, it's an existing shed, it's southern property line, it goes right through the middle of the shed. So the shed belongs to the property owner to the south, which is Danny Milano and Harry Milano. So there was a lot of discussion on how to resolve that, and I think the final decision was that the shed, of course, when they put the shed there, they probably didn't know that was the property line, and when they surveyed it, they saw that it was. So it's really the responsibility of the property owner itself, Milano's, to move the shed. So it's, it's in violation of our zoning laws and setbacks. So I think the direction was that Jeff would send a letter to them.
And I knew there was something I would have talked about, and I couldn't...
I'm not sure there's a big rush, but I think it was supposed to be a friendly letter, just explaining the situation, and giving them a reasonable period of time to just move the shed back onto their property at the rate setback.
We took about sixty years over that.
And it's a simple shed, I mean, if you want to see how to move an Amish shed, just look at YouTube, there's 500 ways of doing it, and some of them don't work. I've seen a couple just collapse when they pull one.
But this was, it must be easy, right? Just someone's...
Yeah, they need to move it. So I think that was, and so we thought that belonged to the property owner of the south, wouldn't affect us.
I'll talk to Stefan.
That was, that's what I thought. There was a lot of discussions about how to do that, but nobody really wanted to hold up his point on that, something bad, so. Mark, any comments on that?
No.
It's just a simple violation of zoning at this time, so.
I mean...
That's what would be good if it was all just the four, where they have the stories just there.
So is that the, that's the neighborhood shed?
Yeah, it belongs to the property owners of the south of it.
So Jeff thought it was not going to...
It shouldn't have any effect on the grand, the subdivision.
That's what we thought, as we're talking about that.
Essentially something, well, I would take the property.
The guys agreed to move it, so it's not, I disagree with it, so.
One other question that, that just happened about a year ago too, for something like this, in that, what's, you know, I'm reading Chesapeake County Department of Asia, Primary Issues. Plan does not show a wall location for law line, this is their new law.
But it does now.
It does now, it does now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see until now.
No, it just goes back and forth, back and forth.
See, Stefan, they got the very first plan, and like I said, this has been back and forth, because it lies around a couple of times, so it's been approved.
Oh, so, okay, two is resolved, the driveway is resolved, okay.
Yes, that's all resolved now.
Yeah, and I think so, I should have stated that when we had the PC meeting, we went through each letter, and we, and we made sure what was resolved, what wasn't resolved, and was there, and if it wasn't resolved, was there a plan to resolve, or was it documentation kind of that?
Yeah, exactly, like the process with promises that will get down to future.
But you can always condition a approval, there are some conditions in this motion, so. All right, Nancy, you can read the motion, let's look at that further discussion.
Yeah, I make a motion that board of supervisors approve the Cox Final Minor Subdivision Plan dated May 3rd, 2019, last revised June 17, 2019, with the bottom waiver. Waiver of 22, I wrote this, it was...
Section, I think.
Section 22 dash 502, 1, period 1Q, requiring both the stormwater plan and erosion sedimentation control plan as May 17 defers these requirements to the time of construction of the new dwelling. The board will not require sidewalks or street lighting due to the rural character of the area. The applicant must pay an impact fee of $667.41 at the time the building in front of this issue. Before recording the plan, the bottom must occur. Evidence of PADDP approval for the planning model must be provided. Any outstanding issues in Pete Eisenberg's letter of July 3, 2019 should be addressed, and any and all outstanding fees must be paid in full.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David. So now's discussion time.
I'm sure there are any other open issues.
No, I mean, I see where it's the landscapes theory is asking for the sidewalks, but it just doesn't make sense.
The neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, it's just not, it would be out of character for the neighborhood, so.
The road doesn't have sidewalks, it just doesn't make any sense.
Keep the sidewalks in there.
How did that ever develop, that requirement, that the supervisors made that decision to not the planning commission?
Well, it would be subdivision ordinance waiver, and that's in the purview of the board of supervisors, so, I mean, you're looking for a recommendation, but then in some instances, I think...
Okay, it's in the Saldos and then here.
Right, so you have the right to waive provisions in the subdivision, no variances.
So any more discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries five.
So, do I make the motion, because I have questions to ask, just, like, what is this?
I think this thing's pretty simple when you're given, I would read the motion and then while I would...
And then while I have the discussion again.
I make a motion that the board of supervisors accept the ASA application of Tax Parcel 72 dash 4 dash 32.1 to begin the process of including this 13.7 acre parcel on Peace Steel Road into the township's agricultural security area. Can I have a second, please?
All segmented.
Okay, we don't do anything, right? Because we're being discussed, no one is discussed, right?
We're being discussed.
Okay, so John, I, I don't, what's our, what's our criteria? I don't, how, to get into this, isn't it farm?
It's a 13 acre farm, founder's name is Oliver, I've known him for years, they got horses on there.
But what, all it does is helps limit lawsuits and...
Right.
And then...
Security Act, yeah.
Useups complaints, yeah, they're agriculture, so they're entitled to do certain things, you know, like for time, time doesn't...
I'm still confused by, by the, so why don't, why aren't they allowed to do it now? Like, why don't, what's so special about being in this?
Well, the reason they want to be in the ASA, they want to get a conservation agreement on the property, and this is one of the first requirements, it has to be in the Ag Security Area, or they can't do it.
So what, but by us agreeing to do this, we're not saying we're going to be paying any money on it.
Oh, no, 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 this is just...
So what are the, so as a, as a board member, I'm sorry, just basic stuff, and I was looking for it in my notes and was there, what criteria do I have to use to make that decision? Is anybody who's a farmer, should I?
No, you, we have an agricultural security area, and it should be adjacent to the existing area.
And there's a committee that reviews that and will vote on that.
Yeah, but we're the county, or?
No, our, we, in-house, we have an Ag Security.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so we're, we're being asked to vote on this, I need to know what criteria, we're basing it on...
Being asked to accept their application.
But, but then it says somewhere else in it that they're saying that we support this, what about, I don't want to support it. I mean, I know the words, but I don't know what needs, I don't know what...
So, so the, the Ag Security Area is set up and reviewed every seven years, consisting of agricultural, I don't have the map in front of me, but it's a delineated map of parcels that are agricultural in nature, and there's various reasons for wanting to be included in it. Specifically, active farms would have protection against nuisance violations, there's, I think the Acre Act probably has done a lot to prevent...
To help that, not so many do, okay.
So that's reviewed every seven years, there's also issues with, if you're in that ASA, then you can't have your property taken by, you know, the eminent domain, there's another ASA board even you can go to, not that that is an issue here, but in order to be considered of the Ag easement program, the county has to first be in the, in an agricultural security area.
But some people do this without any expectation of ag easements, so it's, I mean, it sounds like it, it's unnecessary stuff if you're looking for easement, but people do it and have no interest in easement too. I can't speak to this one, but they're there with easement, they just...
In this one, right. There are farmers that are in the Ag Security area, and they're not, they do not have easements on the right.
Yeah, there's written criteria in the law, I don't have it, it's like you have to have at least $10,000 in revenue, or, I think you have to have at least 10 contiguous acres, and if you don't, then you have to have at least $10,000 in revenue from agricultural property.
So someone don't let analysis instead of pay this, they check, the contiguous...
They have 13.
Yeah, so if they have more than 10, then they don't need to have revenue associated with agriculture, but that would be the reason, would be agricultural use on property. What do you grow?
Well, they have a stable, that's considered agriculture.
Yeah, if it's horses or...
And, oh, Donna, this goes to...
The first of the cross from the park.
The Red Horse and Natural Nature.
This goes to the planning commission for review too, so I mean, it's not just...
Yeah, I know, but if I'm vote, just, I'm known to be a pain in the ass, but if I'm voting for something, I want to know what I'm voting for, and I don't need to, I'll probably say yes, I'm 99% test, but I just don't know what I'm voting for.
I think the primary benefit for them is some protection against nuisance complaints. Is that a fair assessment of it, Mark?
It's the primary.
Primary.
And then, and then also get someone their first step to an easement.
If they want to go that way, but...
They say they do, it's already in the...
Is there a tax benefit of going into the easement, or do you already have whatever tax on it? No, there's no tax benefit, it's, if they're, I don't know if they're in the Ag 319.
They are 319, they are 319, there's no tax benefit to being in the ASA, but if they want, they would add this, but they need this step.
Right, so this is just accepting the application, correct, John?
Yes, yes.
I think I remember, I did this list several years ago, but this is just the first step. Once you accept the application, then it starts...
The process.
The process of reviewing, and we have an ASA committee that reviews it, makes a recommendation to the board of supervisors, so if you look at this list, then this is just number two.
So this will come back to us again once other people have done their work. Okay, so this is, I hear what you're saying, this is the first step to get into the process, this is not a final decision.
No, this is just accepting their application.
This will take the year.
And if it takes, oh...
One or two days, right?
And then we'll get some data when it comes back, saying we have looked at this, these list of criteria, and based on our analysis, it either is or isn't.
And that'd be alcoholic here, is...
And all come back.
As a committee that reviews these.
Thank you for explaining.
We don't meet very often, but they...
No, thanks for explaining to me, so we're just getting started.
This is just the beginning of the process, correct?
Okay.
Do you want to vote on that?
Yes. Someone raised all the questions, anybody else have any questions?
We haven't, we're still discussing.
Still want to discuss, so is there any other comments or for discussion?
No.
Do you have any? Yeah. Okay, and Stefan, you okay?
Stefan, I'm not sure.
All right, so can we, let's vote, I'm sorry, I pulled this up, but all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five. Thank you for helping me out.
No, it's okay. That doesn't come up very often.
Yeah, I know, I was looking for, for...
Now, we come to the, the next item on the agenda, which is the Solid Ordinance, which is going to be a long discussion, so we have some folks here from the Kimblesville Methodist Church that want to talk to us about some of their proposals, they have some issues related to the financing of their church. Zach, you have any problem changing the agenda and having them come in first? Because they have to go to a one.
I'm just, you're a trooper, so I figured you were, but...
And you have the choice, so you're ready to say whatever.
Yeah, right.
You don't need a nap.
All right, why don't you folks introduce yourselves and start to talk about it.
I'm Tom Vee.
I'm Dan Mahal.
Do you have the first and last names here?
I don't know your name, Tom.
A Tom Vee, that's V-E-A-S-C-Y.
And it's Dan Mahal, M-A-H-A-L.
Okay. All right, primarily, what we're here for is, Kimblesville Church is in great financial difficulty here. We're, we can't afford the mortgage for the building that we added onto. We're not really using that building very much yet, so face maintenance and heating and cooling and everything. Approximately from what they tell me, maybe two to three months to a point where we just have to go, we're not going to be able to, with the amount of people we have in the congregation now, over a series of things that happen, and if it ends in that, we just can't sustain it. So we have a consulting fellow, and I think he's been in contact with a few of his here.
His name is, what was it?
Robert Peters.
Could you break that down? I talked to him on the phone, but he could not get his name.
I have it all, I did it all, and he's out now, and he's delighted. And I had a lot of copies waiting on me.
We can make some more right now.
Our problems, wait for him to get to you.
Why don't you get one, the gentleman, Sharon back here, she'll make some copies.
Thank you.
Anyway, the issue that we have, we have several options, okay, and we're working on them all, and it's all in, it's in the papers that I gave you there, where the one thing that, the reason we're here is one of the ways that the neighbors can be able to go forward would be to use the largest building in that church pretty big, and do the most, the whole division, we really don't still do, for loan, housing, or chambers, you know, or for...
Just scan that.
It would be approximately forty units starting, forty units that they would put in there. Hopefully, ideally, we'd like them to leave us with some portion of space, maybe dirt as that is. I understand that that kind of brings some problems, and then it's cool use, it has to be able to come. The state has backed some of this, you know, and from the conversation... from the conversations we had, you wanted to come here tonight, present this to you to see. If that would be something that you would likely approve, putting in this low-income house, because, you know, we have to go and apply to the state for funds, a lot of.
The state of Pennsylvania is the grantor?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And for fifty, provide it up.
Yeah, it would be a lot, where he explains it in there, it's not like we have any control over the area, the state has that, where it has to be a lot of your system to get in. In other words, we can't say, hey, we have members of church, and we want that place, you can't do that. Has to be applied for, and then it goes through a lot.
He did say, if you guys had a permit, you restrict it, you could restrict it to Franklin County, the President.
I don't think that what he said.
Correct.
If you wanted it.
Yeah.
So it'd be independent living?
It would be independent of the act, it would be like a nursing home situation.
Anybody familiar with the Luther House?
Yes.
Conus, Conus.
Yeah.
How many people would stay, how many, what is the occupancy potential? Uh, there'd be, like I said, anywhere from thirty to forty apartments, is what it was claimed.
And how much would the state?
I mean, obviously, you'd need to pay off whatever you pay off, but at least you have to break even, so what, what's the grant that you'd get from the state for that? Anything? That I don't know. He, he will go to the state and see what kind of grant we can get. But he didn't want to do this until we came to you, because if you said, no, we're not going to have that, there's no reason for us to proceed with it and go through all these permits, because we need the, you know, the, the, the septic system that we have roped it into, we have to make sure that this is up there with work. We have to, there's a whole lot of process, and we have to.
You're, you're going through the right procedure, because typically, anybody wants to do something of this significance or develop a commercial property, you want to offer the board first.
Yeah, you're the first, yeah.
And the reason is, if it's something, they have to put it in this November.
Okay.
If not, it's going to prolong the, the, it is not going to be great.
Yeah, and wouldn't work, so we want to pursue.
Remember deadline?
What's that?
Remember deadline is the.
Yeah, to, to apply for the state funding, uh.
Who manages, let's say, say, we say yes, for an idea, we want to go and help people with this, who manages it? Do you make sure that, you know, some people are there, that some people take care of their places, that, I don't know, just that all the.
What, he said, he said it was state?
Um, yeah.
It sounds to me like this is going to be outside of your timeframe for operating the church, doesn't it?
It wouldn't be us if, you know, it would be, I think it would be overseen by the state, and we'd have to hire somebody, or I'm not sure how all that works.
If the church shuts down, is, uh, United Methodist Conference going to try to sell the property or anything like that?
Uh, we are going to, this is one avenue, the other avenue we're going to do within probably this week, is get a commercial real estate agent and put the sign out there. Somebody that would know if somebody would be interested in, whether it be medical dentist offices, I don't know, you know, uh, place, hold weddings, he, he had a whole bunch of things, we don't know, we've got to get a local real estate agent that knows the area, that knows people, that want it. We had one that was very interested in it, was a, um, a funeral, which would have been perfect, but he has an eight-month no clause, and he can't move in for eight months, and he can't sustain it for eight months, so.
Is this, when you say it's a facility, are we talking about the entire church, or just the addition that was put on out of later date?
Uh, if something did happen, it would be the entire church.
It would be, it could be either, it depends, because the developers have to come in now, okay? And ideally, we would love to keep the worship. It doesn't mean I'm over that, but if a developer comes and says, no, we're going to need the whole thing, then we'll develop that whole thing, we'll have a fine little place, but ideally, what we would like is for the church to manage. But whether that happens, I think it's.
Did you determine that there might be thirty to forty units? What was the criteria you used?
Um, and again, Robert Peters, and he would love, love to been here, he has the most information, but he said generally, he said the state, that's what they did, they go into areas, and he said they usually keep it between thirty and forty. He goes, there are some that went up to eighty.
It just doesn't seem like the facility's big enough. I mean, I've been in that building for.
Well, he's, he's been in the base part, the big room.
Yeah.
They want to put another floor.
What else do you?
They want to put another floor on that big room, so that would be more apartments up there, plus all the classrooms that we have in that new addition already, would be, I don't know, we have five pretty big rooms.
That still seems like a lot of units for that building size.
And then downstairs, still four, and two, there's still, probably, there's a lot of room in there, I don't know, but all that would have to be figured out, and so.
The septic system would have to be completely done.
Well, the floor would have to have to look at that.
No way the septic system is needed for that kind of a competition.
Yeah.
What would be the, um, have you guys, if, if you're talking about the idea that there's not enough funds to keep going with the church for, um, two to three, would you say weeks?
Months.
Months, okay. Months, I mean, I would think there's a lot of upfront costs to be able to convert this into a senior residence with the, the septic and with the infrastructure cost. Or is, is, I guess a developer can go on that?
Yeah.
You would have to assume the mortgage, or assume, essentially, by the way, where you can sell them.
Yeah, he wants to go to the bank, see if they'll work with us and give us time, or he said, you know, the developer would come up with it, if they wouldn't, and he said sometimes the banks, I don't know, I'm just telling you, told. He said sometimes the banks, if you go to them and they see there's a path forward, and then you also tell them, you'll give them the construction money, that they like construction ones. I don't know if that's correct, but he said, they'll, they'll try and work with them, uh, to do that. But yeah, either way, the banks want to have their, their, our, we can.
Well, I have to put my input in. So you came to us, and I know it's probably a really difficult situation, so I appreciate the spot you're in, and a lot of tough feelings there. Personally, I think it would be lovely for there to be a place for people with low income, vets, or vets or both. Um, in this community, there's very little, and also, when you need the residents, there are a lot of elderly residents who are living on half-acre, one-acre, two-acre lots, that it is well beyond their ability to maintain. And if, unfortunately, they would have to move to Gennersville or somewhere else, maybe New Walker, there's the, you know, there's nothing right here for them.
Right.
So, as the daughter of that elderly father, to me, I think it's a really neat idea, and I would sort of support it. I know there would be tons of hurdles, you know, there's a lot of questions you can't answer right now. But if you came for in concept, I think in concept, I think it's really a good thing.
This Robert Peters, and his numbers on the last few.
Yeah, we wish he could be here, because he.
He had only answered, don't talk to him on the phone, but I just.
Yeah, he would have had answers that, that we don't have.
Do you like think forty units is the right, I don't know that the right number is.
I, I don't either, I guess the state would, would kind of determine it, but this is his ministry, he, he is a developer, but what he does is he goes around, and one of his ministries is churches, buildings, and he tries to turn them into something.
Does he, does he look at his ministry as opposed to, to a business, that, that word means something to me? Does, do you think?
That's part of it, he's managed, and he can.
Because that, that makes a big difference, it shows me he's not going to make these things small and cram these people in, and, and leave them with that. Not, not a good situation.
And I don't think this is, like, if it was to happen, if you speak to him, he's done it other places.
Okay, well, that's because of experience.
So it's not like.
Yeah.
I have a few questions on, um, I'm curious about the history, how old is this extra building that caused the financial ruin of the church? And, uh, what happened where, I don't want to get into behind the, all those jeeps or whatever the saying is. Um, but what happened where you, uh, the congregation's population has gone down so substantially that it wound up being a poor decision in hindsight to build this extra facility, which is causing financial ruin?
Very, uh, our pastor, Pastor Dave Barkson, was there. Uh, he put us in a congregation to put this addition on, okay? We had a little problem in the beginning, uh, you say we had to have fifty percent of the money up front. Supposedly, we had that, personally, I don't think we quite had that. Uh, and that was back in the two thousand and eight area, where behind the church, they said they were going to put a building development back there. You would know more of that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I believe Ann was, uh, owned that at the time, and they were just trying to get a little bit of, uh, property from him for extra apartments, and what did what happen? Uh, so anyway, that, they were building, they will come, if you will. From wrong thinking, taking away more debt on than we showed out, and now, looking in hindsight, should have never been done. We should have never, you know, we looked into a lot of things, and never take on a church, and never take on more than seven years debt that it can't pay back. And it just, so things started to turn south. Pastor Dave, and I wasn't involved in all the behind scenes things, but, um, we couldn't afford his salary anymore. Uh, he was probably one of the better-paid pastors in the area. There were some other issues going on that I, I don't want to get into. The decision was made, uh, for him to leave, you know? Not his decision necessarily, but the decision was made. Now, Dave, I know him, I know his parents, I still know them, I have great people. Um, what happened was, you know, inside he would be, and they told the congregation that Dave Barkson retired. Not entirely true, but a half-truth, okay? And the reason it's a half-truth is because he now would get his pension, because he had enough time, so. But he didn't want to retire, but, okay, it was a forced retirement that happened, all right? Well, if he would have stayed in the Methodist congregation, or he could not have went to a church within a certain amount of miles around, I think it may have been fifty, but I'm not sure what it was. But he changed over to Presbyterian.
Avondale Presbyterian.
And he went to Avondale Presbyterian, with him went half our congregation, but he lost half our money there, all right? They went with him.
What, what was your congregation at its peak?
At its peak, about a hundred and fifty, yeah, two seventy-five each, so it's a hundred.
You're down into thirties now?
Hundred thirty. Well, then we got new cash that came in, and, and not everybody, uh, connected with him very well. Uh, he was, he's a good guy, but, you know, he, he was very untraditional, he came in with, he, he looked like, let me put it this way, when he did the Christian day school, we used to do chapel behind, and the kids thought he lived in a sanctuary. I mean, he came in like he was the guard, that's just the way. Tim wasn't going to change, you know, he had long hair, and he, he cut it and gave it to, uh, the cancer for wings and stuff. He had a good heart, but, you know, he didn't, it, it's conservative up there, he was far from conservative. Well, he lost another twenty-five, but he just didn't get along, so now, this is where we are.
That's too bad. The other question I have is, um, is there a United States Methodist, I don't know where the Methodist church at Portor?
Okay, there's an eastern town that you guys have, is.
Uh, like, for example, would there, could there be funding or grants from the church itself?
They won't, no.
Okay.
They won't take one of that.
And then the second question I have is, I'm thinking about a low-income housing prob, you know, thirty to forty people, one is, I'm wondering if we make a stipulation that they have to be Franklin residents, uh, if that would, uh, if there would be enough people in that, I'm not sure. That could, that could hurt excessively.
Exactly. I don't think it needs to be the case.
And the second question I have is, and I'm, I'm not trying to be weird about it. When you have a low-income housing, how does that affect the surrounding property values?
You would not have argued that.
It's in, it's in the, it's in the commercial district, it's in the.
Gennersville, the lead team's number is going so bad, because they run lawsuits, I don't know, my dad's in blizzard, so I think that they're. They're pretty amazing, the markets were, you know, someone that's, that's retired, or they don't work really.
No, this town said it's wrong, is what it says. One other thing I didn't bring up, I don't know where this came from, but it says it was in the website, you were looking for uh, uh, more room or another place, and he said, what, a church would be perfect, because we got plenty of room, and we got the offices and everything. So I don't know, because I talked to Jones, he said, I don't know anything about that.
They don't need.
It's on their website, they're looking for some.
She might be in the comp plan that we want.
Yeah, it was probably, it's a thirteen-year comp plan.
Really, I don't know, I think that was there, anyway.
The debt service, I understand, is about four hundred and ninety thousand, or that?
The debt?
Yeah, that's.
About four twenty-five in that area.
Uh, you were the economic.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think it's four hundred and fifty, but it's a word about there.
I think it's closer to four twenty-five, I'm not sure exactly.
I mean, it is our job to, obviously, we worry about property value, but it is our job to be inclusive too, so we have to find that balance. And, I mean, we already have apartments, low-income apartments in our, in our low-income.
Yeah, I, there's one other potential benefit to the township, we're in the process of evaluating Arizona for high-density housing, so, uh, well, that could, um, be helpful to supplement the, uh, high-density housing. To find out whether that's, it would be additive, that could be another benefit if it was.
A, a positive point that I just read in here too, is that the Pennsylvania Housing Agency oversees the property with the project sponsor for four years.
Grounded?
For four years, so I mean, they.
Yeah, that's all, that's all preservation advantage.
Yeah, that's what it says here, together with the property sponsor, we're going to see for at least forty years quality of property management.
So that's important, that a, a good reputation, good, good facilities, to get good, you know, people in there that, that are probably a good body of life. I think it would also benefit the local businesses, to have residents who are eating the restaurants and.
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of concerned about this third or forty minutes.
Yeah, but you know, it's not a good.
Yeah, I think that's probably a number they threw out, they're going to be told, I'm sure.
Hopefully, that's.
They're going to come in, measure space, and, and make sure, and like you said, they may want the whole building.
Want to help, help the apartments, let's tell you what you could be, put their price or something.
Yeah, exactly, so.
You can always, you know, build the system out to what it needs, uh, what it is right now.
Well, can I tell you a little lesson, or are we, is that specifically?
No, I don't think they'd get into that.
No.
We would have to have septic.
I, I spoke to you, to Jeff Ogles about the septic, Jeff Ogles and I were talking about it, and I don't know what the occupancy is for that building, but he said the system would have been built for maybe two hundred people at max, or something like that. He said the system would have been built to handle two hundred people all at one time. I mean, not everybody dead, but, but like in the event, they're all, you know, for the day.
Yeah, was that the same as day, day in, day out?
He said that's harder on the system than daily, or to use.
Right, because the votes.
But the justice county half the park is still has to weigh in on it, and.
Yeah, it's, so that's really helpful, but there's a lot, there's a long way. I think what you were looking to ask for was a general sense of, I mean, think this would, you know, that's the.
Would you be, would you be?
If you say it's okay, then they can go that route, or go towards that route.
I don't think we need an okay, he said to go get a feel for how you felt about it. Because he said if you are feeling good about it, or you're open to it, then it's worth, and, and he'll need to contact you,
he has these answers that I don't have, other than it's on his paper there, I want to know, want to find, it's pretty much in there. Uh, he also seen there the other options we have, which is, or the Mennonites may have an interest in, you know, joining us, uh, either all.
What the other option, talk to them. Was the, uh, was the potential office space or something, you would need to get some indication from the commercial estate market? How many square feet is this?
I don't know.
It's a fairly big room, like about forty apartments.
Yeah. Well, they're not going to get it there, but if you, if you put a second floor on, you definitely said that. And then there are living rooms back there, and there's more rooms downstairs, there's actually the old fellow, your hall downstairs, if you go with it, so. I mean, there's, there's a commercial kitchen in there, uh, you know, there's just.
There's a lot of interesting possibilities.
It was said, it's, you know, I think it was voted yesterday, Christian day school, but, and they're for twenty-three years.
I, I don't see a major downside from any of that.
Gone?
Yeah.
We have to, because they're, they're ready to sign up. We have to, because they're ready to sign up. And it wouldn't have been fair to the parents that would sign up, and we don't know the future of the public. We don't know the future in a couple of months, let alone, so even if it went under construction, it could be, there's too many, too many variables there, so we couldn't let that go, go on. In fairness to the parents, they need to start looking to other places.
If you had a viable plan in progress that the banks usually can negotiate time with that. That might not be the deadline if you had something that they thought was gonna work out.
I think the deadline is for the grant.
Was for the grant.
Okay.
For him to apply.
Yeah, other than that, we gotta wait and gear up.
Yeah.
And this construction, I told him, I said, you know, how long's this gonna take? He goes, a year and a half, two years. I'm like, shoot it.
You want your pay.
I'm like, how are you gonna pay this thing? He said, if we get it moving forward, we'll work it out with the developer, why you pay that on papers and then the rest, and they pay it back.
The bank doesn't want on property.
No, no.
They don't want on it, so.
It's low-income housing, right, so these folks probably will afford to buy these places, so is that when the state steps in and helps subsidize it?
And subsidize all of them.
Is that how, are they renting?
It's based on income, and they, they're based on income and they pick up.
Income and age and all.
Is it rental or is it, is it purchased?
No, it's just rental. She says, well, it's a blue for house.
Blue, blue houses are rental.
Yeah, it's all rental, and it goes off the person's income.
Right, right. So that's when the state steps in and helps subsidize it?
I would, I would imagine that, because you know.
Yeah, you don't have.
Yeah.
Is there anything in here about, did you look at parking or traffic or anything like that?
We did not look at traffic, parking.
I'm just thinking about the stuff that, that usually.
Me, yeah, me, I've got forty residents, who brought that up, you say, well, out of the forty residents, there's a possibility they won't have cars. And that, you seem to think that, you know.
There's, there's rules for that stuff. Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say.
That's down the road.
Which again, might be the stumbling block, it'd be the interpreting part of, if you got that part, it's, that part somewhere, but, you know.
Well, you just wanna enter into discussion, so, yeah, it's, well, do we feel good about this or not, is that like a definite now?
Right, that's basically what you were saying, they're, they're really saying, a really step of the, I don't know, I don't think this is for our township or.
When we cover more for now, while we need.
Right, you, time is.
Yeah, right.
So folks, do you have enough kind of early thinking?
I'm not opposed to that. I think, I think we ought to at least see what you could get, see what, what opportunities are out for us and come back to us quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we get, I get Rod Beeter to come down, or if he knows, probably a lot of one of the questions you have, as far as that goes. And, but my mission was probably to just see.
All right, want to see what you can do in a month and then come back to us.
And maybe we could meet with him outside of the regular monthly meetings.
Yeah.
Two semi-classes could do it.
Stephanie? I was gonna say, do you have a question?
Oh yeah, it's number three, going forward, I assume that for the next two months, where this project admits the next annual funding window, which is open this November through December. We need two things from you to count, A, a letter supporting the project. I, as far as today, I'm fine with going forward, I'm not negative towards it, but I wanted a little bit more information.
More details later on.
Yeah.
You need more of a letter of recommendation, it's time to say, before we leave you that.
Do you need the information that we had meeting with him yesterday?
All right, so we're giving you a favorable indication, but probably a letter would need a little more information.
Okay, as far as the letter recommendation, he needs to come.
We need more details.
Needs some more details on how it works and everything, and I'll relay that to him, and he'll be getting contacted here, I'll go over it to him.
Joan, what's involved in the special meeting?
For us to have a special meeting, we need to advertise it.
Is that, is that hard to do?
No, Sharon just puts it, it's in the newspaper.
Because for all the, I don't think we could do this with two super rations, I think you'd have all the board involved, so. I don't know if there's a special meeting.
I don't want you guys to be.
You might maybe just come to your next meeting too.
Yeah. Third Wednesday of every month.
Yeah, right, August, once on meeting day in August, we agree to a different date.
No, it's a.
It's not the third, it's not, remember, I had asked.
Oh, that's right, you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, just in my, the fourth Wednesday or the.
I think we, now, I think we might have the twenty eighth, didn't we?
I helped read it too, let me check.
We want to have the.
The treasures. So that's five weeks out. And you can't get the treasures report out.
In August.
Doesn't mean you could have a special meeting before, you could do the special meeting without me, Joan, if you wanted to go the third Wednesday. I just wanted to know, just for, what was the third Wednesday, everybody except for?
If there was a special meeting, we'd be doing it in a week or two.
And that's fine.
Why would we have?
Just for you to know, the next meeting's normally the third, it's normally the third Wednesday of the month, just all decisions, they were coming up to me to make the fourth, for just this one time.
All right, so the next meeting is August.
Twenty eighth.
Sharon's gonna get, I think it's the twenty eighth.
It is the twenty eighth.
You have it, it's the twenty eighth.
August twenty eighth is the next meeting, and, or we can have a special meeting, but you have to contact you, you know, find advertising.
Yeah, we got a little advertising work to do, and then you'd have to get all this stuff out there, just miss computers and that, we have some. Give us more information.
You're going to have to advertise twenty-four hours ahead for the special.
All right, so it's not too hard to do, okay.
Okay, all right, I'll see, here's the availability, it says, you know, at least, well, again, here, there's some interest in this, you know, white, you're doing. But we need more information.
It's a long time. Frank, on township facility, we've been here for a long time. As long as I've been here.
What's that?
As long as I've been here, I've lived there for forty years, the church has always been here.
Yeah.
It would be nice to see something, go accomplish something kind of separate.
Yeah, all right, just let me close.
You don't think there's any possibility of recovering the congregation, I guess that's a try.
It's been, we've been trying, it's just not going up, I mean, it's, you know, to get it back, I think, you know how it is, I mean, people hear about what happened and then they're just. You know, even people don't know, I hear, you know, like, like, like a plumbing contractor, like a heat guy, you know, he's there, had to get the heater fixed in the big room, exchange or something, you know. And Tom, you know, I'd like to have a check for that, so I said, I got your check. They were just, they're concerned and it's hard to get, it's hard to get people to come in when they think it might not make it, or they heard all these rumors and. He can't take away, there are problems here. We're trying to move forward now, and hopefully we'll be able to, but, you know, what's out there in the perception, I can't, it ain't even the rumors. They go around, the people that were, you know, upset about the whole thing, and, you know, it is, it has to just go. It's all, you know, I'm in business, so I know, you know, you get somebody who has a complaint against you, they go and tell everybody.
Yeah, it was bad, right?
That's it, it's hard to recover from that.
Well, it's like, with me, I didn't even know Pastor Dave, because I don't even go to church there, so I can't speak for.
It was just a bunch of mishaps.
Did I hear that?
He does generally very well like them, I can hear that.
I didn't know.
It's very well liked. Is that name a perk?
Berstrom.
Or churchdom?
Yeah.
No sense us getting mixed up in it, that's not our business.
No, no, you know, nothing, so.
Certainly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for, thank you for hearing, and thank you for moving us up a little bit, so I really appreciate that. I will get in contact with, with Robert and tell him that, yeah, there was interest, but there are more questions that need to be answered on that.
I have him come back to Joan, right?
Yes.
Good, yeah, all right, thank you, thank you very much for your ears. Yeah, that will be thoughtful.
So keep praying, right?
That's it, yeah, exactly, thank you.
All right, are we still gonna discuss the solar?
Yeah.
Yeah, just. You want to get ahead of it, I want to give out a chance to get out of here. Let's see. Solar, I guess just generally, the last time we talked about it, I think it was like about four or five items we expressed some concern about. One were setbacks, some kind of a buffering or screening, reflectance, which is, we want the facility to produce a neighbor of nuisance or reflecting on his house. And then stormwater, and that's what we asked Jeff to start work on, he came back with more than I expected, more than, so.
Is nobody start, because I just don't have a lot of this, well, just maybe Mike's gonna render pretty thoroughly.
Go ahead.
So, I think he did a really nice job, there's a couple things that Joan and I maybe talked about earlier. I, I don't agree with adding the section A seven, which is not in the earlier version, about solar rays are considered impervious surface, and.
Can I address that?
Okay, yes.
The, the first order that you got, that was in your book, just said, if the, if the property owner can demonstrate that stormwater is not affected, you know, you'll let it go. Well, then they decided that that wasn't right, so then Pete and Jeff got together and wrote this section, okay? But in the meantime, we got this memo from the E P.
Oh, good.
Who says you could have.
Okay, so this is that.
So Jeff didn't know about this memo when he wrote this.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay, so that, that could be.
A lot more possibilities. Yeah, okay, great, that really helps, and then it's B, what's in section B two. And then, I think in general, it's great, I don't agree, I've read numerous papers that say that the whole point of the solar is to absorb the light. And you can come by our barn anytime, it is never glaring, it's the whole point of solar panels are not to glare. Versus windshields, you know, pools, all sorts of, you know, picture windows, they, they just never, and I think last week when Matt was in, or last month, he said the same thing. He said he, he's got a couple of neighbors with silver linings, he never sees anything, so that would be my two cents for what it's for. But we do live, and having something say, and they're, don't let them glare, it's not gonna hurt them, right, because they don't live. I don't believe in things that are useful, I just don't think it's useful, and then how would you? Well, I, I don't know enough, I could talk to a. Yeah, an expert that's, that's, that, none of them glare, because I just wanna make sure that that's a great, yeah, so that you feel comfortable with that. And then, the maneuver thing, he did actually make it less, Joan, I'll just show you, I know it's a little confusing, but I'll show you that later, Joan. And then I have another question for Joan, so I got a lower Oxford, they're solar thing, and I said, you know, I don't want us to, people to go, oh, Frank, it's a pain in the butt, I'm gonna go to lower Oxford. So as long as, and I guess Joan will look into it.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
That's okay, I just want us to be competitive.
To be what?
To be competitive and not make it, not have so many hurdles for, I want it to be protective of the community, but I don't want so many hurdles that they're just gonna go to another township and say, oh, forget it. You're talking about commercial ones or the commercial ones? Because, because I think the way, we were all, the way we've done the residents, we try to be as equitable as possible. Yeah, the residents' minds. So it's kind of a commercial one. Yeah, I just don't want us to lose out, because it's a pretty darn good way for us to make a little money, have no cost to our base, you know. You're not having houses coming in, you're not.
No traffic.
No traffic, you know, you get maybe a couple employees, environmentally, it's, you know, by all appearances, it's great for all sorts of, the wildlife, the pollinators. People have goats on them, sheep on them, apiaries, so to me, it's a really low-impact way of us making money and not adding a cost to our base. So, I just don't wanna lose any opportunities because we're too restrictive, and so, sorry, and my last thing was with Joan was I didn't underst, so I really appreciate that it's not, it's no longer, you have to change the zoning to be commercial. But I didn't quite understand whether it should be conditional or development, and I, I'll trust to your judgment and Jeff's that the development is the.
The main development thing.
The main development thing versus a conditional use, and I don't quite understand it enough to be a good judge.
Well, that needs to be looked into, typically a complex facility ends up, no land development.
Right.
I don't know all the rules, but typically that's the way it goes.
My last question would be, do our neighbors require the same thing? And that's where we're, you know, talking.
I would take the lower Oxford coordinates and give it to Jeff Oracle so he can.
Perfect. I would be hesitant about having a land development plan. What, how it's only gonna be lay out and then?
That's kinda where I am.
Yeah.
We'll see how it plays out. It didn't mention commercial, I, I believe it's a commercial industrial facility, I'll see how you can characterize it that way. It's a money-making proposition, you generate an electric power for sale on a major scale. The facilities that are associated with our commercial and industrial type of facilities.
Boy, I disagree. Well, farming has become so technological, we don't consider that commercial industrial, they are making money off of it.
This thing will have, the solar panel is a simple part, but you've got a major control facility, a building with circuit breakers, control equipment, break the power, this is gonna need probably a transformer to. You know, you can convert power from DC to AC and raise the voltage high enough to get it out and create, that all takes commercial industrial equipment.
Well, so what are you suggesting, Joan?
I'm just saying, that's what, that's the facility I say, I don't see that prevents it, but I think that's.
But you don't think the zoning is an issue?
No, I think, I think they have to.
Any zoning.
I think you have to characterize the facility that way because of the profit-making, so.
I don't, farms are, I mean, most farms are profit-making too.
That's right, they don't have that kind of equipment.
Farming now is done with satellite, I mean, and, I mean, you know, grain, I mean, farming can get pretty darn, I know what you're saying, and it's a.
If I look at a, you know, a major water control facility and industrial facility, that's what's gonna be in here.
Right, we're saying all zoning districts only by special sections, so we're not, so we're not.
I just wanna make sure we didn't say it wasn't a commercial nature, I don't think that's a limiting factor, but I think that characterized it.
I, I will say, you know, I told Joan, I just was shocked when I read that townships and PA are allowed to put fracking operations in residential districts. There's no, no law against that. So just to put it in context, well, some of those facilities are pretty, some residential facilities are pretty large properties, and they, I mean, I've been up there, they can do it in a way that you can hardly even see. It's like feel by your water, but yeah. That's, they have other requirements. It just gives you context for zoning. Mark, anything that you hope you're thinking about something?
No, so the issue is these, these commercial facilities are committed in all zoning districts?
That, that's, remember, this is just a draft, and that's how it's now, it's right, right.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Right, so it's section C.
You would have to allow it by conditional use.
Right, I'm okay with that, you know, I mean, I don't think you, I, I think, I understand that you wanna see what they're gonna build, and I, and I appreciate the decommissioning consideration. I think Jeff did a really good job, you know, the setbacks, all those things they've lost us.
I don't think he really looked at any setbacks. No, he just said, because my, my question is that, you know, we may need some unique setbacks, but that's.
So I said the same thing, so.
Yeah, same here, I mean, the same thing, possibly.
No, not, not for all of them, but just for the commercial ones.
Exactly.
But these, these through war, they, they required larger setbacks with, with, like, one or another.
Some buffer.
Right, and that's the other thing we, that he didn't talk about either as well.
So, yeah, that was, that was one of, that was one of the key items that we identified last time, setbacks and buffer.
What is commercials, what is a setback?
Well, he does say.
Setbacks, how far back from?
Section four.
What would be the footage of setbacks?
If you look at current zoning, what do I have here?
Under C five. He does have setbacks, but we don't have numbers on the page, so it's a little confusing, but.
Part five.
Submission requirements, it says, a site plan showing the plan, location of each panel, property lines, setback lines, exits, or, they're not locations, substation, electrical, he's pretty thorough. Well, you know, he says you have to have it, but he doesn't say what the buffer means, he does say setbacks are the same as, replacement of solar panel, should apply, both setback and current requirements of all applicable groups.
But see, this is a, this is gonna be a primary structure, so it's not like a shed that can be ten feet off the line, this is, think that this is a house.
Yeah, but I think that's what we're asking, I think we want to get some knowledge.
Yeah, but the zoning list, you're gonna need to be twenty-five, thirty feet on the side.
Well, if you look at the, the current zoning for the area, which is L D R, the side yard setback is fifteen feet, the rear yard's thirty.
For a house? Or for an accessory structure?
Area bulk regulations.
Wouldn't it be agricultural?
Could you put this in?
Okay, so maybe we need to.
Well, that's the current zoning.
Well, for the golf course.
That's the current zoning for the golf course, I'm just trying, we're looking for typical setbacks.
Right.
So the golf course, yes.
But I think. But the golf course would be how many setbacks, is it fifteen and twenty?
I, can I?
In reality, I think you're gonna need some unique setbacks for this facility.
Yeah, because this.
I don't know what they are or how we would develop. I don't know what they are or how we would develop it, but I think they need to...
Because this is a really good point. Because based on what Joan's saying, remember, we're now allowed, we're only talking about C, I'm talking about the commercial ones. We're allowing these in all zonings. And each zoning has their own setbacks.
Right.
So we may want to say, no, no. Yeah, we want, we want this number everywhere. I mean, or maybe we won't. We just have to go look at each zoning and what the setbacks are and see if that makes sense to us for this particular...
Okay, and the, and the, um, and the LDR is 50 feet. Wait, I have to... That, yeah, hold on a minute.
But he can lay this all out.
Non-residential.
That doesn't happen. Maybe it's a paper.
Rear yard 50 feet, side yard 20 feet.
Fifty, twenty.
Yeah.
Fifty would probably...
Yeah.
Fifty, twenty, it's huge.
Three hundred percent of the year.
But he needs to be in there.
At least that has to mean 10 feet high.
Twenty feet's not much.
The bottom of the panel would be 10 feet high.
Yeah, also in the house.
Yeah, it's, then on side yard setback is 20. Rear yard setback is 50. And front yard setback on arrows or 50, state road will be 75.
All right, so I think the comment is we need to develop some unique setbacks based on some criteria. I don't know what that is.
Because, well, I think it should, as you said, it should be consistent because some, some, yeah, zoning districts should...
And I would like to see some degree of buffering. You know, that if I can come up to a property line, if let's say we say it's a hypothetically 50-foot buffer every zone, then it'd be nice to have at least have, you know, it's different if you're looking at a house. Houses are very common. But if you start looking at 10-foot solar panels that are 20 feet from your property line and there's no trees and it's there all day long, it's not nat, it's not even...
Not natural.
Yeah.
What is the, what is that sample ordinance you said? You got a sample...
These through more, they require like ornamental shrubs, you know, high buffering with, you know, shrubs that stay...
Deciduous?
That are not deciduous.
Not deciduous.
Never evergreen, yes.
Nevergreen. I mean, you can have some in there, but I mean, they want, they want a buffer.
Yeah.
And Oxford's 10 acres, I can't imagine how many panels you could get on 10 acres.
Well, that's why Jeff made it 20.
Is that why you went to...
For the commercial part.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Maybe we put bamboo.
Rose, Rose asked, I'll tell you one thing. It's tremendous buffer. You can't see through it or walk through it.
I think you get other problems.
Want to keep somebody from walking on your property. That'll do it.
Once I get rid of the solar panels.
So how do you feel about this including all, just solar? Do you want a solar wing and everything? Or do you, you have to... I don't have any opinions. I feel like if we're going to do this, we want to do it for everybody. But I don't want to get us, like, so complicated that we can't...
We have everything in this township already except for manure digesters. We have all the time.
And then manure digester, I think we should, uh... So Joan, I'm just going to show you real quickly. He actually went from more restrictive to less restrictive on the manure digester. I don't think he meant to. It's just a bit complicated. Let's quickly show you because it's easier to share. So on the old, on the version before this afternoon, he had all manure digesters should meet, you know... So I'll give you an example. All manure, we don't page those numbers, but all manure digesters should meet the following requirements. They all have to have a traffic study. And then he moved then to say only community ones need a traffic study. And I don't think he meant to do that.
Yeah, but see, you wouldn't need them if it was on your farm, your personal farm, because nobody's going to be bringing things into you.
It's just you, you know? The journal did have, I mean, if you wanted to copy journal exactly, it was all manure digesters need to have a traffic study.
Yeah, but maybe we don't want to, right?
Like, like...
I guess I have a reason.
I mean, you definitely want a traffic study for the community, right? Because it...
Well, definitely, but even, I mean, if manure's getting, coming in and out of trucks.
Yeah, but, but it's not.
Is it just theirs?
Yeah, but see, what he did, he just...
So the original one just said it should all meet these requirements. But see, he didn't, he told me, he said, I left out community. This is for, no, neither. Community's here. Community's right down here. Community, he just got me to stop. He's made this less restrictive, but that's the one.
I have, no, I have a challenge with that.
It's up to him. This is what happens when you have nothing to do all day.
We still have this reflection requirement. So if it's not an issue, it becomes not an issue.
But I think something has to be checked.
I think you've got to have it in the ordinance that it can't be a neighborhood nuisance in that respect.
I just think, I don't like putting things in that makes sense, but...
Well, it does make sense. It's unlikely because the angle of the panels for this area is 40 degrees. So that's like, you can imagine 45, it's just a little less than that. South facing if they're fixed.
Yeah, just go and step and buy some places with solar panels.
It was virtually impossible to have a reflection off. But I don't care.
Yeah, but it's like a...
It's currently something we look at now. Because we talked about it with the residential ones. All right, and then the last one.
Just so that we're clear, it says special exception for the commercial use in all zoning districts, which will be before the zoning hearing board. Same mechanism, giving the board of supervisors the ability to make a decision would be conditional use.
So with the solar...
Well, it's up to how much control the board wants. Certainly, if there was an application before the zoning hearing board for this type of use, the board of supervisors could participate in it and make suggestions on conditions. Who would be making the decision? The actual decision would be the zoning hearing board, so...
I would prefer conditional use. The board would have full control.
Yeah.
They usually, one of the advantages of the board of the zoning hearing board is they, if they provide a variant that doesn't set precedent. I don't know very about precedent here, so we...
Well, they need a variance and then you can go there too. But if you want control over all aspects of this related to the standards for the ground and the same standards for special exception for conditional use, then...
Can you see that issue to make sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would just literally need to change that from the one term.
The last issue was the stormwater issue. And reading that piece from...
Well, that was good. That was, yeah, they're clear.
Well, give them, give them options.
No, I got three here. This is the DEP's one. This document they provided is really just a Q and A. It says right here that it's not a, it's not a legal document or an ordinance.
It's advice.
It says this document provides the framework within DEP, within which DEP and the delegated county conservation agencies exercise administrative discretion and discretion. And future DEP reserves to discretion and deviate from interpretations in this document if circumstances warrant. It says that this stuff doesn't really apply.
Yeah, but, so what I deal with solar panels, we have to, it just gives you the sense of what they're thinking is they always deserve the right to change their minds.
They do.
But, yeah, exactly, and they will. But at least it gives you, you're not thinking, you're not dealing with a blank slate. You at least have a sense of where they're coming from.
They've done some research.
And thought, yeah. And you get the sense that they're trying to work with the ordinance. And then, Joan, what do you want to do? Are you okay with, are you okay with not having gravel channels? That's basically the bottom line.
I don't think that's the right solution, is gravel channels.
I don't either.
Because that's impervious surface.
It just makes you more trouble. And, and they haven't allowed...
Well, if you have, if you have a large farm that has these panels on it and you want to decommission it, then you have this pipe and all this gravel in the ground before it can go back.
And if you want your sheep to graze there, now you have things that are going to get caught up in the...
There is, there is an issue with the way the panels operate. They channel the water.
Yeah.
Because the water, at 40 degrees, it's going to run off just like, just like a roof. So depending on how high it is, if it goes over 10 feet, then there's a concern for the impact of the water in the ground.
I think the point we've worried before is that the person has to prove that it's...
I don't know how they prove that. That's where we'll probably talk to Jeff and our engineer.
Some kind of calculation of snowing on the ground to absorb the supply.
The water's going to go somewhere. If you look at the way stormwater engages the ground, you stand outside in a meadow or woods when it's raining hard, you can look down at the ground, you don't see any water running. It just absorbs into the ground because all the water goes in you. But when you channel it...
We have a lot of problems in our front fields.
It's saturated, yeah.
I'm not a proponent of this ordinance, believe me. But I, but I also need to consider fairness. Other people are being required to apply, to comply with. It's at great expense and difficulty. So we can't just step over this.
Yeah, we are some.
I don't know what the answer is right now.
Right.
So after reading this today, I see a lot of issues. But the gravel, I don't agree with that. I don't agree.
I think it just makes it worse.
The water's going to go...
You don't agree that it's enough?
I don't agree that that's needed at all. Because it's, you're putting gravel down, which is impervious. And that's not going to help you. But you may have to channel it somehow.
But they probably do have data. I can assure you that somewhere, people have been measuring the amount of water that comes down off of these panels. And we could probably find out.
There, there may be. But ultimately, these guys are going to tell us what to do.
You mean the...
The DEP.
Right.
So we need to just reference DEP? Is that how you do it?
No, no, it's conflicting. It's conflicting stuff in here right now. So I don't have the answer.
You want to just think about it.
So that needs to be developed further, okay? And ultimately, we'd probably make the decision.
And Jeff just got his hands on it anyway, so he may need to...
Yeah, when I told him we wanted it, he says, no, I just did this. I said, that's all right. They just want something to look at.
It's all going back to them anyways.
Yeah.
Without comments or...
All right, so I think this is probably the biggest open item we got here. It's this stormwater. All right, like I said, I'm not a proponent of this ordinance. This thing has created all kinds of problems for us to use. We'll put up pole barns now. The cost of a pole barn is 50% of the cost of it now, stormwater. Talked to Braeber, the guys that sell those buildings up there. They were complaining about it. I mentioned, I put some stuff up there recently.
So Joan, just to be clear for one, maybe right a minute, you're not, it's not that you're not a proponent of what we're trying to do.
No, no, no.
It's that you're not a proponent of what's going, what has to be done.
Your ordinance is owners, is owners, to everybody.
For LS4, right, right, not, not the solar. Solar you're happy with? You want to do this?
I'm probably the solar, no. I just want to make sure that, that whatever we do with stormwater is going to be acceptable to these people.
I don't want you to be quoting in the minutes for the meeting that you're against the solar ordinance. It's your, your, your company on compliance with the order. You're, you're one of those. And Joan, I understand what you're saying. You want to be fair to everyone, but it, it, you know, I'm not sure we can compare, like, my 36-five, whatever it is, 30-foot barn to a solar panel. I just don't know that you can.
It's the same thing. It's a roof.
It's way more surface area than a solar panel.
It's a simple calculation. You make, you make a vertical, uh...
You're comparing one big, one big building to one solar panel.
Well, these are a bunch of little, that's why they have...
You're comparing, comparing the whole house. And solar panels can be the same thing. Because it's, your roof is not going to take any water. So there's going to be the same amount. Water's going to come straight down and it's going to hit a certain amount of area that it cannot be absorbed. And it's going to run down into something. Whether it's a gutter system, some kind of gravel or a sand system. It's going to be a system. My, my neighborhood, every house in my neighborhood, we have an underground runoff for each one of our houses. It runs off into a gutter, down the downspat, and it just goes into a gravel pit underground. No connection to our septic systems and no connection to our very, very well-maintained above-ground system that provides water for our pond.
We have paint driveways and the roads. I mean, there's a lot of...
Driveways, the roads, they have big drains that lead to a pond. We have a big pond that has good rain, water running through.
One main takeaway is I want this township to benefit from what I think is a lot of good things from solar farms. And if we make it too painful, we can do it. And then we're really hurting ourselves and our community.
Well, we're not about to choose. It's not to do with DEP.
I think if we follow DEP, I'm fine. I think we'll come up with something that we can...
We can do worse, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
And DEP also says in this memo that if the solar panel is greater than ten percent slow that then you do need to install tranches.
Fair enough.
So that it's...
It's worth the trip.
Right, and it's coming down too quickly. That makes sense.
We may not be able to compete with other local townships. Because...
Well, they've got the same requirements in Chester County, the DEP.
I'm fine with that. Whether it's buffering and setbacks and all that, we may not be able to compete. Because generally, I think our land is more expensive than oxygen township. So, if somebody wants to buy a new...
We know about that. We know about that.
Not according to the golf course.
Well, that's one off.
But either way, Stefan, yeah, I mean, there's things we can control and things we can't.
Right.
But I think what we can control is not be out of, you know, completely out of the range of other...
No, I...
That goes without rain to setbacks.
I just wanted a little bit higher setback and I would also, if I lived next to this place, I wouldn't wanna have a ton of solar panels, a ton of fuel in my house. I'd wanna have some type of a tray or something too.
I agree.
Okay, setbacks and buffers are gonna work together. So, some rational basis has to be built.
Right.
So, I don't know what it is, but I think that's one of the...
The assumption would be that if someone was gonna put solar panels, then it would be in a deciderable property.
That's true.
If you're not on a one-acre lot.
I think it's like...
No, no, we've limited. I mean, we said twenty.
For rent.
For commercial, obviously.
That would make sense. So, that apparently comes with room around the edges to...
But it's fair to make sure that it's not ruined.
I'm not saying, I'm agreeing with that. I'm agreeing that we do wanna have setbacks. We wanna have, because, you know, if a guy had a one-acre parcel and he gave him big setbacks, he'd be like, "Hey, that doesn't mean twenty square feet to hook my solar panels." Nothing, you know?
And I agree, it shouldn't be for a...
But people wouldn't do it unless they had a sizable piece of ground. I'm sure more than ten acres and twenty probably sounds more realistic.
And apparently, we do have one advantage is that new Pico Station that they did a lot of work on about, I don't know, six years ago. Apparently, everybody seems to like that.
Pico Station?
The station on eight forty-one, they upgraded it. Apparently, they spent a lot of money upgrading it and that's very appealing to these solar companies. It's right next to that property for sale, eighty-three acres.
Oh, you mean because it's convenient to receive the power?
I think if the way the power's transmitted, that's capable of taking the solar power. So, we got that.
So, I have another question. I don't know how this works. So, there was a couple comments in about decommissioning and the need, this is for the big ones, the commercial ones, you had to have like an escrow fund. And then it goes, if the people don't do it, the operator, the facility owner don't do it, then the township needs to do it. I'm assuming we do that by using the escrow. So, I just made a comment that we need to make it clear that's the case.
Can you require that? Can you require them to put that much money on it?
I mean, I don't see why not.
Okay, that's a fair amount of money.
I'm in general authority under the Secretary of State's township code and I am not aware of anyone challenging it. Certainly could be odorous if it's a significant-sized facility.
Oh, yeah, it could be a significant amount of money that they had to tie up.
But that gives me my next question, because the way I've read the current ordinance, it sounds like they don't get that money back after the decommissioning is done.
Correct.
Doesn't that mean they gotta double, don't they get the money to do the actual decommissioning?
They could be a bond that they put up.
Okay, so that could be clear.
It's not necessarily cash, but a bond.
Okay, just so they don't have to pay, keep the money aside.
We don't wanna give them their money until it's done. We do that with builders that put up escrow. They come, they send Pete a letter saying, "This is what we have done." Pete checks it and says, "Okay, you can have this one twenty back."
So, how does that work? Okay, so what's a bond different from actual money?
Well, they don't have to put up the whole money. They pay the interest on the bond.
It's like a loan.
It's like a loan.
Oh, okay, and that's what's... Do you see, my concern is that they gotta spend, say, plus a hundred thousand dollars to decommission. They gotta spend a hundred to do the actual decommissioning just to get the other ten. So, that doesn't work that way?
They buy a bond.
Is it an interest-only loan?
Which they pay the interest.
Well, I don't know. They do it through the...
Could be a letter of credit.
Letter of credit or something that, you know, they have money in the back or...
And so, it says not less than twenty-five percent of the actual decommission.
That looks right.
Yeah, just to make sure that that's clear, because I wasn't clear the names. I put the...
Okay, that's reasonable. I'm not opposed to it at all. I just wanna make that to be an honorable requirement.
All right.
This is another issue I wanna talk about is the vegetation care and its maintenance. There's a whole lot written in here in the DEP thing about different types of vegetation and then how to maintain it.
So, John, is this for solar or for all of them?
For the solar.
Okay, for the solar. Commercial ones are...
And you grow plants underneath the panels. You know, and then you can't use herbicides on it, which is amazing.
Yeah, but you don't want, should kill it, depending what's growing there. You don't want it to kill it all and then you have dirt.
No, 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 no. When you're growing crops, the herbicides are selective.
If it's a crop, you're yes.
Well, that's right. That's true. They're saying a meadow crop or something else.
This is better than farming for that reason. This is much better than farming. It doesn't affect the quality of your water supply, you know, it's not... I mean, it's a very inert way of managing some land.
Then you gotta mow it all the time, right?
Well, they have to worry about it. They can put sheep on there. It's not our problem.
We don't stop it with the solar.
I don't know. And they say that's why, I mean, that's one of the benefits, is it really helps the wildlife.
We need to find that.
Something about vegetation.
That needs some definition.
More information on vegetation.
Kind of vegetation that they're allowed to put in there and then how they maintain.
How would you grow crops there?
Well, if you put a... So, you wanna put orchard grass in there, which is a high-end horse food.
Right.
Ah, that's pretty good grass.
You can put a herbicide on there so you can eliminate all the thistle and all that other stuff.
The solar...
Could you really get in there to...
Yeah, you won't be able to, but...
You'd be able to? Would it win you to do anything except how horses could enter there?
You still need, if you can't do that, then you need to mow it.
Do you imagine breaking the panels with your tractor? I'm asking you, I've broken fencing.
Yeah, but what do you think it would be if you didn't mow it?
Well, all we have to do is go ask some solar designers what they've done. I mean, you could ask the commercial solar company, a company to come in. Apparently, this company that did the Eagle Stadium is dying because of...
Starts out with all the invasive species that grow low, mulled well roses and thistle and all those other things. And then you get saplings and trees.
I mean, that's their business, you know? We could have them come in if you really care. I know this company that did the Eagle Stadium wants to come in and talk.
They've got requirements in here, so...
They're talking about kind of grass?
Talked about, I saw somewhere they want meadow grass.
They don't want, they don't want acres to be far.
If you wanna see something expensive, plant a real meadow.
It wasn't far. It was real meadow.
Okay, but it's like you said, John, it's something worth...
Alright, I think that's an issue. We've gotta, they've got... I didn't have the time to really study it, but there's enough of it in here that the DEP's got some concerns about it.
Is it the same company that did the years ago or hockey stadium, which is completely covered?
I haven't done it one. All I know is, without speaking out of school, that the solar company that did the Eagle Stadium is interested in talking to people about their stories, about maybe what they could do in front of township. I don't know if that's the same stuff. But it'd be a chance for us to learn, to ask some questions that clearly they're more expert on than I am, because I've never done this, other than on our roof.
I think the issue, we don't want to be an eyesore in neighborhood, so that's what we're doing, I say.
Yeah.
We don't want something bad.
But they're not. I mean, we don't know what the heck goes on up in those eighty-three acres. It's fine, whatever they're doing. Right?
If it's buffered, you're not gonna see that one.
That may be the solution, is just definitely getting buffered setback.
Yeah, do what they need to do. Because, I mean, you know, we don't wanna become like Big Brother.
John, do you have any thought answers? No, I think he's just gonna have to answer himself. So, I was asking questions about cutoffs. So, this twelve kilowatt cutoff, I just want to...
Something's wrong with these units, because a twelve-kilowatt generator, I looked that up. It's only a house generator, combined with fifteen-hundred.
Right, so East Drummond was much higher. I just checked one.
What Jeff did is he took the numbers out and instead, because in East Drummond, I think the twelve was the medium. Up to twelve was medium and then...
Now twenty. Twenty was the...
Twelve to twenty was medium, above twenty was large, and below twelve was residential or something.
No, twenty was the cutoff for residential. Then it was twenty-one to two-hundred was the minimum. Was the medium, and anything higher than two-hundred was high.
We need something to...
Just so I need to understand.
These numbers just mean, they're just numbers to us. So, we need to characterize these numbers.
Well, he sent me this email. He said that an average resident uses twelve thousand kilowatts per year. And he said, "A twelve-kilowatt solar array produces almost seventeen thousand kilowatts per year."
Alright, well, something's wrong with these units here. We need to characterize these units, because I don't understand twelve KW.
Yeah, maybe he needs to put a...
And I wanna know why it's different from the other ones?
Twelve KW means you've got a big solar facility. Then something's not right.
I think he's just trying to get...
No, he said twelve kilowatts, that's what you say.
But this is strictly residential. He gave me this example for residential, like what you would have in your backyard.
So, twelve thousand watts is twelve kilowatts?
You have to be careful whether you're talking about instantaneous capacity or consumption over a month or a year. So, that's what we need.
I think his numbers are too low, but I just want to...
Well, it sounds like it, but maybe he gets some logic there.
Yeah, that's what was the rationale. And I had that for each of the, each time he made it.
Okay, I'll ask about that.
If it's accessory, you want something that's gonna basically provide power to the house and then sell off a little bit.
A little, yeah.
Yeah, the way I saw it in something was up to a hundred and twenty-five percent of your use was fine.
That makes sense, right?
And then above that, it became more commercial.
So, maybe you could base his numbers on that. What's a hundred and twenty-five percent of the total use?
Well, that's what it's telling, because it was seventeen thousand units was...
And the average use is twelve.
The average use is twelve kilowatts?
Or twelve thousand watts.
But then he's trying to figure out a business that wants to do their own solar too, might be more.
No, this was strictly residential.
Yeah, I think they should explain why it's so different from there.
You didn't put KWH, you just said KW. There's no time unit.
That's the issue, is it per day?
That's exactly where I am, so I don't understand the units.
Yeah, he just said kilowatts. He didn't say how much.
Okay.
We'll let him define it.
Go ahead.
You know what's... So, I actually, I had looked into this for my house. And for the most part, I was, they told me no, because I looked too much in the trees.
Are you gonna get enough sun?
No. They laughed.
You try.
But what I do refer to actually who has a whole roof of solar panels. And what they're saying, yeah, you're right, kilowatt-hours is the usual metric, not kilowatts.
It's not KW. KW is...
Kilowatt per day, per week, the...
It's usually KW H.
Yeah. The systems that SolarCity, which was the installer that came to me and the one that... They installed a fifteen kilowatt-hour...
Say it again?
A fifteen kilo, fifteen kilowatt-hour per panel system. So, they had, he had something like ten panels. So, he was generating a hundred and fifty kilowatt-hours.
Yes, we have it.
On a sunny day.
Yes.
Right.
That's the rating capacity of the panel is...
It's the capacity, so when the sun is out, no...
Sun out, nothing in the way.
Summer day, yeah.
So, just in terms of an upper limit, twenty sounds like a big house might be able to accommodate that, but anything larger than that...
But didn't you say it was ten kilowatt-hours per panel? It was ten. But it was ten panels per house, so you're talking...
We have forty-four panels.
Two thousand.
Alright, the comment back to...
I just need to... We need to lay it out.
The comment back to LPLs, have them talk to one of our electrical engineers up there and define this thing and some units. I understand. Yeah.
And then how many panels per acre? We gotta know how much per panel. And then on a typical acre, what do we expect? Fifty panels, a hundred panels?
Well, it depends on the size. And plus, they have to decide what parts of the acre, like some areas you can't put a barn because it's white land. So, that's where you need to play in there.
Yes, and that's why you need to lay it out.
Exactly, that's what you need to do. And the other question, I did have another question. I forgot what it was.
You asked about a wood-fired boiler.
You said we have that, right?
We have one of those in town.
Haven't been any issues with it? Is that, so how restricted?
It's on a clear reform.
So, if it's not, you don't need to be restricted, though, just don't worry.
They're pretty common. You go up in New England, they're all over the place.
I mean, is that helpful for anyone? Do we have to put the wood-fired boiler?
Well, I mean, if somebody wants to do it, because now you know, having to deal with it. I mean, the one person who wanted to do it, we had a hard time trying to get all the requirements, because first of all, they put it in without telling us. And then the mortgage company wouldn't give them the mortgage because it was there. So, we had to go back in the back door and try and figure everything out. So, it's better to be upfront with it.
So, the other thing, I know we've been talking about solar, but back to windmills. There was a section, and they did a section F number four. They talk about three windmills.
Yeah, I agree.
And then they talk about one acre being the minimum.
I'm thinking, oh, you windmills.
It's one per acre, and if that isn't sufficient for the, to produce enough electricity, then they have to apply it to have more. And then most they can have is three.
So, you can have three windmills...
If you can show that you can't produce enough with one and they allow you, when I say day, the board allows you to do it.
But that's per acre. So, if you have eighty acres, you can have eighty windmills.
No, it's saying that you get a three mil, I read that to say you could have three windmills on the acre.
If, it says, "One windmill per lot or tract of land unless the applicant shall demonstrate that the energy produced by a single windmill is insufficient to provide the energy to the tractor property. In no event shall any property contain more than three windmills."
Well, I don't think there should be three anyways. People would if they wanna, I think it's crazy.
Well, we have a twenty-acre parcel.
No, it's a one acre. I don't think you should ever be allowed to have three windmills in one acre.
I got you. I mean, what it's saying, if I'm not mistaken, is if you have eighty acres, you can only have three windmills.
No, I'm not reading that.
No.
Is that what you...
Well, it says, "In no event shall any property contain more than three windmills."
Yes, that's what it said. See, I saw, it's not, it's not...
Yeah, that's not ready.
When you read it, that's how I heard. Is it a three or eight acres?
So, read it again, Joe. Just read.
"With energy generation shall be limited to one windmill per lot or tract of land unless the applicant shall demonstrate that the energy provided by a single windmill is insufficient to provide energy for the tractor property. In no event shall any property contain more than three windmills and the minimum lot size shall be one acre."
Maybe...
So, see, it says, "No property shall contain more than three windmills." That's not written like it said.
I don't agree with that.
Yes, that's not...
Just the comment that's wrong is on the other side. That doesn't make any sense.
So, that's one of the things you don't get after that.
Joe, you have a special question. Can you do me a favor?
I agree.
Yeah.
One acre shouldn't be...
Should be allowed.
Read it again.
Do you mind? I'm interested in what, where you need to have more than one, okay? So, you would need to demonstrate.
Yeah.
You need to demonstrate, but it says, "The power for the property," does it not?
Why can't they sell it?
So, that is it's not commercial.
Yeah.
So...
That's correct. Her reading was about the self...
So, how many major farms are really needing more than one acre?
So, this is after...
It's for the property.
Okay, that's what the section is about. It's only for, yeah, but that's not the commercial section. The commercial section's in the next section. This is only in the one...
So, it says, "It's a reasonable property." It seems reasonable.
I thought it was for...
The same, that we had three windmills.
Yeah, because, I mean...
You know, because it's only for that property.
Because it's only for that property, so if you need, if you need more than three windmills, you may need a position where what you really need to do is think about a more powerful windmill than just keeping forty-five.
Then you're not just taking care of yourself.
He just needs to work on this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Because then you get a more powerful windmill, then you're getting into different heights and you have...
Right, forty-five meters.
So, we don't want to have three windmills in one acre, but we also understand why he may wanna have only three in this particular situation, because it's for...
Because it's a property of use, so you, I mean, I don't know how much a given windmill will generate. But...
I would ask him about that.
Okay, alright.
You know, I can't imagine that in most cases you would need...
It's very complicated.
How would one dinner street that is insufficient?
Because it's not electric, right? Would you say, "I use X amount of things of energy for my house?"
The windmill is ready to produce so much. I mean, I would use so much.
I don't hear you. I want to go for a year.
Well, I think...
You're always pretty chill. It's a war.
I know, if we need data, we'll see the limit of very windy areas. My street has a ton of wind. And I know that Delaware is the windiest state in the Union. That's because it's all seaboard. It's the entire, it's the only state that has the entire state property within, what, fifty miles or whatever of the ocean. And that's why Delaware is the windiest state in the country.
I thought we just said a lot about you.
Well, any of these wind generating companies know all the weather requirements for any area. Joe, there's one area that I might wanna direct the LTL's attention, is FAQ number four. Got a whole lot of restricted departments built into these solar panels. So, they need to look at that stuff.
Yeah, and do that into the...
Okay.
That, this is a whole series of things you shall or shall not do. I'm not sure I have any more. I think we gotta get some feedback from LTL at their convenience.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we need to do it every month, but at their convenience.
Well, we'll see how long it takes them to get together.
We can watch. I mean, just look at this thing. It's a complicated ordinance. This thing's just ripe with unintended consequences. So, we need a little more time to understand all these issues and how they actually apply and make sure we don't step in anything bad.
Wasn't there something that we commented last month on the noise associated with people? That was related to winter. That's commercial.
Commercial, okay.
It's in there.
And they were giants, too.
Oh, yeah. There was, there was being proposed, and there were several proposals in various areas in... There are typically four hundred to six hundred feet tall. And so, you know, the blades on those things, difficult to go halfway down.
Yeah. The top of the tower, yeah.
Yeah.
The top center of the tower.
I mean, they're huge. And so, that's the reason why they generate concerns about noise, some of which is very low. Not subsonic, but toward the subsonic range. And they're also, that's why, the other thing that comes up with those is flicker because of the sides of the blades. And because they can, when they rotate toward the wind, it's not so much, they control reflection of it very well. It's when the sun is behind and the rays are passing through.
I'm not sure that we have the land or terrain. I'm not sure we have the land or terrain to support a facility like that. Because if you see them, they're all on big open areas, you know, trees or slopes or anything around them. We're chopped up all over there.
You go through this manual, it's... Driving to New York, you also receive a...
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a lot down there?
No, I think it's unlikely.
Alright, guys.
Windmills or solar panels?
Windmills.
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 Have we talked this thing out enough for now?
I think we did good.
Yeah, it was pretty good discussion.
Let them know we did a good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
Buffering and...
It's important, every other stuff.
Kilowatts.
Yeah, you told me.
I want to have a kilowatt.
All right.
Good job.
Oh, one more question. The longevity of the solar panel. If we go through all this effort and somebody comes in and puts them in and all, are these solar panels going to be, you know, expired in 10 years? Do they expire or 50 years? I think they have, I think that's one of the complaints with them, is that the people think they're really great, they put them in, they do all the work around them and then they find out that solar panels fail after 10 years or.
And they stop working?
No.
Well, they stopped producing.
Well, I think better technology comes in.
That's what I'm expecting.
This place is the bigger gutter.
But that's why they did this more.
Well, they, no, they, they.
They efficient.
They cut down the kilowatts that they were producing.
So their efficiency goes down.
Their efficiency goes way down. I've heard that, and I don't, I don't have any data.
US solar, remember they.
But I would like to know that also, John.
Okay, I have that.
Well, I mean, if the solar panels last 10 years or 50 years, seven things that could be price and efficiency curves or crossing each other.
That's what it is.
So what happens is the panel you put in 10 years ago is considered less efficient and less wear matched than a panel battery today.
And they swap them out.
Right, it's like a car battery, it works great for five years.
Well, it's like your heater or air conditioner. Yeah, but that's a question, so like a battery or is it like a computer?
Well, but they also do, I mean, I just remind, they do degrade it over time as well, I mean, not in a year or two or maybe even 10, but they do. What happens is as they degrade, their ability to generate power goes down with it and then, if I understand thermodynamics, as more power or as less power is shunted from the panels, the albedo then increases, so the heat on the panel increases, which damages the panel further.
Ah, so it's.
Oh, so that's no loss.
Depends on what it happens before they create the loan off or not.
Well, and that's why we have the decommissional term, because if it comes off that they don't like it anymore, they have to take it. Do you have anything here?
All right, John, we got enough feedback, I think, for LTL? All right, any other discussion here?
Public comments?
Well, I have a backup public comment.
Oh, thank you.
Because he really is a exact villain with your. And the only comment I have is, I've been following sort of a little bit of a trauma, and it's not in Franklin Township, it's actually in London Britain Township where T-Mobile was engaged with the Township and also with the company that designs these, I think the phrase used is stealth silo. And basically, the, yeah, so New Garden basically shot them now and T-Mobile apparently has decided to walk away from it. But I also, I have a few friends in that industry and they are still looking for sites. I don't remember, and we did talk about this in the planning, I don't remember what our final conclusion was in terms of power generation, I'm sorry, cell sites either. But I'm almost positive we didn't cover anything like what they were proposing, where they would build a structure that fits in, not one of those fake trees, not, you know, not.
No, I saw that site, I saw that site, a picture of a silo installation, I think the issue is that New Garden Township doesn't need it, but London Britain needs the coverage, so. They may, I don't know what the real issue is, I'm just supposing that maybe they didn't want to approve it because it didn't benefit their township, so.
It was right on the edge of, we represent New Garden and I've attended all its hearings, it was literally right on the edge of New Garden in London Britain. In an area and they were, they were attempting to demonstrate that there was a gap in coverage.
There is.
Well, they're never, whether or not that was demonstrated, it's going to be hearing board deciding, it wasn't, they did, so.
But I mean, my own thought, that seems a little short, maybe the short side just make it a little selfish, because yes, maybe that township doesn't have that thing, but the people around them do.
Yeah, like I said, I drive through there, right near where they would want to put it and I don't have coverage.
Oh, I can't go over.
I got drop balls in that area.
Land is empty, there's no.
You have people or land, you have, you have people that live in London Britain who can't, can't tell.
So my public comment was, I don't know if anybody's approached.
Hold on a second, we have too many conversations going on here.
So my public comment was, I don't know if anybody has approached or will approach Franklin Township along those lines, but if they do, I don't know that there's an ordinance in place that covers that, so.
I don't know whether we have a zoning thing, they probably would have to come to us with a proposal in some area that isn't zoned for it and we'd have to look at it.
I just remember the PC, all these times, about micro cells and micro towers.
It really belongs to London Britain, they have a spot to put it inside.
Yeah, we have pretty good coverage in our township.
Pretty well covered.
Down Chatham is a little.
Yeah, it's on my.
Well, but I honestly, I'm thinking more of a public, a public good, you know, like, because firefighters, ambulances, someone crashes on Chatham Road, they try to get.
Sure, sure.
Oh, they can't.
Wow.
Well, we have a tower across the park.
New Garden Township is a responsible township, so I'm sure they have the right and good reasons for doing what they do. We don't know it, but I respect their.
Not questioning that, I'm just saying if it comes to us.
I don't think, I think the placement of the tower fills in a gap between our tower and other towers, so I don't think we have.
We can't help.
Function that way. It's a question of, you know, where the gap in coverage is.
That would be my understanding, I don't think we're close enough.
Yeah, at least that particular gap in coverage. We're going to have to take a more powerful land corner.
Our town was, if we did that, that might, you know, wouldn't consider that.
Wasn't any testimony of those hearings, it would be.
I think it might also do a geographic feature that, you know, that how much, remember you put in, if it's in a valley, walls on the side, it may not matter.
I'm saying what I can find out, I'm right, I'm right, this meeting every month.
I keep that perspective.
He knows.
He knows.